allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see Brittany is remote. If you can help us with roll call?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Here, Diver.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
Mark Strout.
Absent.
Okay. John Boyle.
Present.
Dan Esco.
Absent.
And our town manager, Robert, I mean, Tom Hutchinson.
Here. Great. Thank you, Brittany. Moving on to the minutes of October 25th, 2021.
Okay, and make a motion to accept the minutes as presented for October 25th, 2021.
Thank you.
Motion second, any discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Hear or none? Motion carries. Public address to the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company, institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair that designates may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Anyone from the audience? Okay, seeing none. Anyone?
Henry Rose.
Oh, Mr. Rose. Yes, sir.
Hi. I'm a conservation commissioner and I live at 89 North Mountain Road. My wife Cheryl is going to be making some comments about the proposed bylaws of conservation to the Wetlands Protection Act, Dalton Bylaw. I may wish to speak after her during that discussion on that agenda item, so I can leave that now.
Great. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. We'll move to number six, Zinkies Pub, the application for the keynote license. Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, yes. We have... The first item we have is an application for a keynote license. It actually doesn't technically take town action, but the town action would be to object to it if the town had objections. Seeing that no one has said that they would come forward with objections to it, I think it would be nonetheless prudent for the board to vote no objection to this, just to get it on record.
Okay, great.
Then I'll make a motion to not to object to the Zinkies Pub's... Let's see, license for keynote.
Thank you.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Uh, let's see. Staff appointment ratifications.
The first staff appointment ratification we have is Agnes Witkowski, a registered nurse as health agent as of December 20th, 2021. She's here to say hello to the board.
Welcome. Hi, Agnes.
Hi.
Oh, you're here. Hi.
Thank you. So, as I said, I'm Agnes Witkowski and I'm for the position of the health agent for the town of Dalton.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, especially during the... Yeah, and thank you for stepping in. We're losing, you know, certainly Jane, a great resource and Dr. Doyle. We have a great board of health and a great team around, so anything we can do to support you and your efforts. Happy to do so.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome. Do we need a vote?
Uh, please.
Okay.
Okay. Make a motion. We appoint Agnes Witkowski as health agent as of December 20th, 2021.
Thank you.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Uh, hear or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Hear or none? Motion carries. Welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, awesome. Anything we can do to help you, just let us know, but you get a great team.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the next one, Mr. Hutchinson?
I'm pleased to present Jessica Suleski as Highway Cemetery Administrative Assistant as of December 20th, 21. Jessica's with us, as is our Highway Superintendent.
Great. Awesome.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good morning.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Any questions for the board at all, or?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any comments at all, or?
She went through, we went through the whole process. We had a lot of candidates. Jessica came to the top, so.
Great. Great. Excellent.
Happy to have you.
Fantastic. With that motion?
Sure. I make a motion. We appoint Jessica Suleski as Highway Cemetery Administrative Assistant as of December 20th, 2021.
For a second?
Thank you.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Objections? Hear or none? Motion carries. Great. Jessica, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Again, same thing. You have a great team around you and anything we can do to help you with success, just say so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hutchinson, the next one?
Finally, this is actually a reappointment. Hunter Connolly came on as a highway equipment operator when we needed some temporary help due to an accident in the highway department. We're asking that he remain on the job through... It says here June 30th, 2022, but because of recent developments, we're now asking for only until March 31st, 2022.
Okay, great. Have a motion?
Sure. I make a motion. We appoint Hunter Connolly as Highway Equipment Operator from January 1st, 2022 to March 31st, 2022.
Oh, yeah, there's a typo there, Tom, on the memo. It says 2021. It's okay. See, here, you ran the stuff, right? Yeah, so, okay. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Hear or none? Motion carries. Great. And thank you, Hunter. And thank you, Bud, for your leadership there.
Thank you, Bud.
Number eight, committee appointment ratifications.
The planning board would like to appoint a subcommittee which consists of members who are not also on the planning board. So, we'd like to take this opportunity to appoint the committee as a whole. This is a committee on accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. And the planning board is hoping to bring forward a bylaw for this next annual town meeting. In order to do so, they need to work pretty quickly to get an accessory dwelling unit bylaw that fits Dalton. So, they'd like to get this committee appointed quickly. And right now, we have four names: Caleb Darby, Jared Munjin, Chris Brown, and Amy Turnbull, who we would like to appoint to the committee. There's some question that Amy Turnbull may not be in the area and may not be able to be sworn in in person, but at least if we could get the appointment on the books, if she were around, she could get sworn in. If not, she'll be attending remotely anyway. And I put forward those names for your ratification pending the actual planning board recommendation, which is slated for Wednesday. This coming Wednesday.
Great. Got a motion?
Okay. I make a motion. We appoint to accessory dwelling units, ADU Subcommittee, Caleb Darby, Jared Munjin, Chris Brown, and Amy Turnbull, effective December 14th, 2021, and through June 30th, 2022, pending planning board recommendation.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Excellent. And do we need to read the charge into the rec... the charge for the ADU Committee into the rec. Tom, or is that just for?
Uh, yes. I think actually a motion to accept the charge would be in order.
Read the charge and then make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Read it and then we can make a motion.
The charge for the accessory dwelling unit committee. The accessory dwelling unit, ADU Committee of the Planning Board is charged with drafting the ADU bylaw for town meeting. It will be dissolved upon the approval of the article at the town meeting.
Is there a motion to accept the charge?
I make a motion. We accept the charge.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hear or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Hear or none? Motion carries. Great. Thank you. Uh, number nine, town planner update.
Yes, I thought it would be a good idea since our new town planner, Grant McGregor, has so much of the town substantive business under his charge, working with the planning board, the Board of Appeals, the Open Space and Recreation Commission, the Green Committee, and...
I'm not sure. I lost track. Planning Board, Board of Appeals, DRA, Green Dalton Committee.
DRA, of course.
Yes. Open Space and Recreation, Conservation, although Cheryl is...
Oh, Conservation.
She kind of runs the show. All right, so I'll start the update. The planning board is conducting business as usual at their monthly meetings. They recently brought Jared Munjin aboard to replace Joe Fish, who resigned from all town boards and committees. As Tom mentioned, an ADU Subcommittee is being created and the ratification is preferred. Actually, they will be, I should say, recommended at Wednesday's planning board meeting. After this, the group plans to meet multiple times per month to place a bylaw for the war for town meeting. And although the time constraints are tight, many of the members have been doing their own research already, so I would like to see what they have in place because I think it would be possible to draft something well thought out and beneficial for the town, specifically in our population. If that's not the case and it's rushed, who wouldn't hold any kind of special town meeting for this? We would just wait until the next annual town meeting. So, business as usual with the Board of Appeals. Not many applications are coming in recently. The board did recently grant a variance at its last meeting for 197 Main Street. The DRA just released a promotional video for the town of Dalton, which was created by Trapp and Coffee and Wacona graduate Kyle Dempsey specifically. The video has it installed for the close-knit community for all seasons. The expense will be approved at the DRA meeting on the 15th. That will be via Zoom. Discussions aren't really very lively at these meetings. And the DDIC, as they do jointly with the DRA, brought on one new member, Jared Munjin, and the DRA brought on a member as well, Samus Wall.
That's a great video, by the way.
Yeah, that was outstanding.
It's on the town website. I noticed that this afternoon, so that's great. So...
It's awesome.
Do we have a, like, it's on YouTube as well? I think it's on YouTube.
We can work to get that on Dalton Community television too, too, if it's not already undone.
That'd be great. Yeah, very, very well done. So, kudos to the group for that.
The Green Dalton Committee has been reinstated and they are focused on reducing energy use and costs yearly. And that's being done right now by evaluating data to strategize ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and to reduce energy costs. The committee's been active following Green Community Lighting Project, which is actually, the new lights aren't here. It just closed out last week. Current efforts on updated and updated energy savings report is the basis for our planned current request on town hall installation is currently being discussed. It may be that we want to hold up or apply for Green Community grants back-to-back years, but that's what they're working on right now. The first meeting of the Open Space and Recreation Committee was held on... Second, the OSR Committee will be meeting at Wacona High School because Jared Shannon is the AD, and I believe Dean of Students over there, and he's on the committee and offered a classroom in there because the board wants to see, basically what they're charged with is to implement the many action steps that are on that Open Space and Recreation Plan, which is generally written broad in nature. So, they'll be presenting findings from their own research on the plan at the next meeting. And they kind of want to visualize that on a chalkboard or a whiteboard.
Yeah.
So, at that point, that they're meeting at 6:00 or 7:00, that's kind of irrelevant there.
That's great to be able to use that space over there, too. That's great to use that space over there, too.
Yeah, I'm excited. I haven't been there myself, so I'm excited to see it.
Yeah, great.
They operate at 4:00 at the meeting next month.
Great.
So, business is pretty much as usual with the Conservation Commission. So, all outdoors approaching. The committee doesn't see as many applications. Something we did recently was organize those Conservation Commission files upstairs, up by my office in those filing cabinets, which need the most attention. Cheryl has more to present on the bylaw later this evening, so I'll let her do that. And having additional with the SMG State. In addition to all of that, I've been doing a map, a little bit of mapping more periodically. One of the maps that was used for the Walker Brook study area was sent to potential contractors in the procurement process for the prunerary engineering over there, which was, that was just kind of, this is our area that we want to be focusing on, nothing too much. The map is also used in our request to HMDAR for the APR land use regarding the parcels on the Windsor border. There, I've also updated data to attach an address to each parcel. And Dalton using the assessor's data, as it stood before, the addresses were not tied in with that, at least from what I was able to find, so hopefully it didn't do something that was already down there. And I should say, I am currently putting together visuals and organizing some data for an upcoming housing meeting, which Kelly Pezy at the Senior Center, she's starting to get Paul Martin, possibly Smitty Pignatelli in there to discuss any kind of avenues we have to upgrade or senior housing or provide a more diverse housing stock or more options.
Yeah, I think the message from the community in that one is just that we're having those conversations about looking at just the housing situation in general, affordable housing, hear about ADUs and town planners update, and some more to come along with that discussion. So, it's good and important work moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
On the APR land question, that's come back around. Is it January or February that we have a future agenda kind of update on that?
Yes, I had a brief update later this evening.
Oh, it's part of your update. Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you, Grant. That's great. Any questions from the board?
No, awesome, Grant. Thank you.
John? You go. Great job, Grant, and, you know, we've brought on some new leaders. And again, thank you for picking Dalton. I think you're doing a great job, so glad to have you here.
Thanks for being here.
I'm hoping Grant can report every few months.
Yeah, this is very helpful. Very helpful. Yeah. Awesome. Board of Health update. I see Jane. Hey, Jane.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Jane.
Thank you for having me today. So, COVID, I don't think it's going to take anyone by surprise that our numbers have continued to go up, unfortunately. We're about double what we were last year. And I believe that it was forwarded to you, there was a PowerPoint that Berkshire Health Systems put together last week. And it does a good job of putting in perspective where we're at, mainly that since the last month, the number of inpatients at Berkshire Medical Center has nearly tripled. They have increased their testing capabilities and are testing about 650 to 700 people per day. And that is probably going to be impacted by, I believe that Pittsfield and possibly Hinsdale will be, those residents will start being able to get free testing. We're not quite sure what the mechanism is going to be for that, but free at-home testing. And so Berkshire County now has the highest incident rate of COVID for 100,000 residents in the entire state. But not all is bad. What's happening is that while our incidence rate is currently more than 30% higher than it was at the 2020 peak, the positive patients requiring hospital care is nearly 70% lower, as it was last January. So, even though we have a lot more cases, people are getting a lot less sick and less likely to require hospitals care. And I think that's a testament to our relatively high vaccination rates in our county, like in our county, and then certainly Dalton. Speaking of vaccination, there is going to be one, there's one more scheduled large clinic for people who want to get their boosters at Berkshire Community College on Saturday, and that will be posted on the website with a link to that. We'll also be sending out information to the businesses. We'll also be sending out information to the businesses, so, to help them kind of navigate as their employees are diagnosed with COVID, especially with the change that happened statewide of no longer requiring contact tracing from, for, like, everyone is not going to long, going to be called directly by a nurse. So, the contact places are going to focus in on kids, school-age kids, and they're going to be focusing in off of clusters. And so, a big change that's happening is that people are no longer necessarily going to get a call from a nurse. And so, we need to up the education of our residents so that they know, you know, what they can and can't be doing for the next 10 days. And if their close contact that's not vaccinated, again, what they can and, you know, can't do as far as quarantine. So, there's a lot of opportunity for education around this. It's kind of a big change. And, you know, I know that you met, I believe it's Agnes, at the meeting. Agnes Witkowski. And she's a registered nurse, and so we're really lucky in Dalton that we've got someone that is so capable to go ahead and lead that effort moving forward. Some other really exciting news that just came in, and if you'll forgive me, it's so, it's so fresh that it's just on my text, but the governor, the governor just signed a bill that's going to be giving $200 million for local and regional public health, including local boards of health staffing, technology, and training. That is going to be a game changer for towns, especially as the needs from boards of health kind of continue to ratchet up. We're seeing a lot of housing issues. And, you know, right now, I would say one of the biggest obstacles that we're even in Dalton facing, other than COVID, really has to do around mental health and housing issues coming in. And we just don't have the capacity currently to really address those, as they can. Give an example, over the last two weeks, I believe, we've had three pretty severe housing referrals come in, and those take a tremendous amount of time. And so, you know, we're really lucky that the fire chief, the police chief, and the board of health, I feel like we're working really well together. But I'm hoping that we can, Dalton can look at this additional money and, you know, and think about making sure that we're keeping up with the housing needs, especially as housing continues to get so expensive for people. So, that's my COVID update. We're in the process... Are there any questions about COVID before I go on Solid Waste?
I have one, Jane.
Yes.
The young kids that just got their first shots, are they going to be able to get a booster shot like in 60 days or 30 days? Do you see that happening for them?
So, the kids, the clinics have been set up. I believe that everyone has gotten their second shot through the COVID clinic that went through Springfield.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what's going to be recommended as far as boosters for those kids. I mean, even for adults, it's been at least six months out, and it will be remaining to be seen what's recommended for kids. So, I can't answer that question for you. Okay. I will say that, you know, the Berkshire Vaccine Collaborative, which we were very fortunate that they mobilized and have been able to provide these larger clinics, you know, they're, they are looking at winding down because even with, even though they did a great job, you know, it's still resources, and so hopefully we'll continue to have resources to be able to kind of offer that. There's just nothing planned at this point.
Okay. Do you know what percentage of them actually got it?
Um, I... I was in a meeting the other day, and I think that, I would hate to, I would hate to be quoted on it, but I do not believe it was 60, I don't believe it was more than 50% at this point that are fully vaccinated. I have worked quite a few of the COVID clinics, including some pediatric clinics, and we would have, most of the kids were coming in for their second shot, but we did have probably 10% came in for their first shot. So, I think there will be kind of a rotating demand. And I also think that, you know, parents, they just wanted to learn more about it. They wanted to get that certain comfort level with it. But the timeframe was so fast that by the time they made the decision, the first, the first opportunity to have the vaccine had already passed. So, hopefully, there'll be some additional discussion on making sure that kids have access.
Thank you.
Is that it, Jane? I don't know if she furrows. Looks like she furrows. Okay, we'll refer to come back. It looks like she furrows on that.
Yeah.
Okay, that was a very good update. I have a couple of questions for her when she comes back. Oh, there she is. Hey, Jane.
And I'm back.
All right. Was that it for the reporter? Did you have more?
Well, I actually had some information I wanted to share about the solid waste and the, we, the transfer station contract. So, we're looking at the first week in January. We're having a consultant come in that Dalton had hired through a grant, who's going to help us, is going to assist to really figure out what the scope of for the request for proposals is. And we're really excited about it. I think it's going to end up being Tuesday, but we'll put that out there. And the purpose of, from the consultant is just to really hear what Dalton wants. And so, if the select board, there will be John Boyle is the select board representative there. But I also feel like this would be a good opportunity for anyone really to give input on what it is that we're looking for moving forward. It's a kind of an exciting time, and Tom and I have been working closely to try to make sure that that, the momentum of that continues and there's some continuity there.
Great. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. And Jane, just before we wrap up this section, we typically have another board meeting at the end of December, but if we don't, I just want to publicly thank you again for your great efforts and your great work, and certainly those of Dr. Doyle on the Board of Health. And so, thank you for your leadership, especially during this COVID crisis, and everything else you had going on in your world. And I don't think many in our community recognize or know that you're not even a full-time equipment employee when you look at the total hours. So, what you've been doing with the hours you've had for your role has just been nothing but heroic. So, thank you for all that effort. Greatly appreciate it.
You're so welcome. You know, it has been a real pleasure to serve the town of Dalton.
We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
We will miss you. Yep, absolutely.
I'll make you proud.
Absolutely. But thank you for helping through the transition and everything else. So, you're leaving us in good hands. So, that's great. Any questions for Jane? No? John, you also? Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much, Jane. Appreciate it. The, moving on to number 11, the Conservation Commission, the Dalton Municipal Wetland Bylaw Proposal. And Mr. Bishop, I guess I'll give the candace to you?
Yeah, I can start with this, and then I'm going to have Cheryl continue.
Okay.
We've been talking, many cities and towns have their own wetland bylaw protection. This gives us a little extra protection than the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. I'm totally in favor of this, just for the simple reason it gives us a little extra, like, we have, now we'll have jurisdiction over isolated wetlands that aren't usually protected under the Wetland Protecting Act. And we also have an extra layer of protection where we have almost like instant gratification where we can get out there. almost like instant gratification, where we can get out there and get a problem solved instead of waiting for DEP. DEP is so short-staffed right now, and we only have, we only have one poor guy that is handling everything throughout this whole region. And things move very slow sometimes. So I'm going to have Cheryl, this was actually drafted from a lot of the other town bylaws, and it's pretty similar to what they're doing. And our next step is to ask Tom to send it to our lawyers for their read on it. We're hoping to get this on, to vote on it at the annual town meeting. So Cheryl, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, so I'm here as the chairperson, the chair of the Conservation Commission. I've been the chair for a couple of years. And as you guys probably know, Bob was chair for many, many years. One of our roles is to educate, so I just thought I'd take this opportunity to give you a little bit of background and let you know a little bit about the Conservation Commission and how we got to this point. So in case you didn't know, the Massachusetts Conservation Commission Act was enacted in 1957, which gave the communities the option to establish conservation commissions to act as advocates for the natural environment, prepare appropriate conservation plans, and manage conservation lands. In 1972, the Mass Wetlands Protection Act was enacted, and it gave conservation commissions regulatory responsibility to implement the act. 1996, the legislature passed the Massachusetts Rivers Protection Act and broadened the jurisdiction of the protection to 200 feet within a mean high watermark of a perennial stream. So just to give, and called that riverfront and named that as another resource to be valued. And as some of you might remember, in 2008, which is starting to feel like longer ago than I realized, the Scenic Mountain Act was something that came under the authority of the conservation commissions. And that has to do with work that's done above 1,500 feet elevation. So to preserve our scenic mountains, and it has more to do with how much clear cutting and that sort of thing that homeowners and how high the peaks of their houses are allowed to be relative to ridges. And that also was a statewide thing with options for communities to adopt their own municipal bylaws. And that is actually the one municipal bylaw we currently have under the Conservation Commission. Dalton did enact a town municipal Scenic Mountain Act bylaw. So, you know, over the years, the wetlands protection and resource protection has evolved. And so it's kind of not surprising that, you know, as we get a greater appreciation of the impact and the values of these resources, that we would want to expand our jurisdiction. And so that's what this is really about, to expand our jurisdiction a little bit. And also it gives us a little more tools for enforcement, which Bob alluded to. Just in case you don't know, our Conservation Commission, you know, has seven volunteers. And a lot of, and Grant is serving as our clerk, which is great for some of the, you know, getting things out, you know, mailed and whatever, and answering, you know, phones and connecting people to us, namely to me, I guess. You know, some towns have a paid conservation agent, and we, at this point, don't really see any need for one. I'm willing to do a lot of that kind of work of researching projects, I would say, in terms of just getting some answers to bring to the Conservation Commission, setting up site visits, which, you know, Bob did for many years as well. Obviously, we've always had a volunteer chair in our town. So I feel like, you know, we do a lot of work. We meet regularly the fourth Tuesday of the month, but we also have, especially in season, many onsite visits. There's obviously no charge to anybody, and we encourage any property owner who has any question about whether or not they have an issue or they want to do work and does their issue fall under our jurisdiction, to please be in touch with us. And we're happy to come out and look at a property and give them, you know, some guidance as to whether they do need to file with us and at what level they need to file with us. And so we try to work with residents not to obstruct their projects, but just to make sure that they're going to be in compliance. And if they are going to have some issues, we talk about the ways that they, you know, we try to help them accomplish what they want with their goals. So we're not here to try to stop people from doing things, but we do want to protect the resources. And that's really, you know, what the wetlands protection is about, because it's understood what the value that these resources bring. And I just wanted to read to you from the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, we talk about having eight interests of the act. In other words, we are protecting these interests. The interests are protection of public and private water supply, protection of groundwater supply, flood control, storm damage prevention, prevention of pollution, protection of land containing shellfish, protection of fisheries, protection of wildlife habitat. So those are what are in the existing Wetlands Protection Act. And those, those are the values of the resources. A lot of folks may not always appreciate, you know, that a marsh has these significant values. It also is a significant carbon sink, you know. So I'm sure that'll be updated at some point to reflect, you know, the climate change protection values of wetlands. In terms of the existing jurisdiction in the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, banks, any bank, freshwater, wetland, coastal wetland, beach, dune, flat, marsh, or swamp. So around here, we tend to think of streams and marshes. And currently, the way it's written, it's only if they're bordering, well, we don't care much about ocean or estuary, but creek, river, stream, pond, or lake. So that's the way it's currently written. And we also have land underwater bodies listed above that I just mentioned, and I guess the land subject to coastal storm flowage, we know land subject to flooding. So, and riverfront area was added with the Rivers Protection Act. So these are the way it currently is read. And you may have noticed that when it comes to something like a pond, we're talking about land under the water, not the water. You know, some things that might intuitively you might think we're protecting, the water technically is not written in. So, you know, we have the banks of a creek or a stream, but, and we can have a marsh that borders on a stream. But if we have a marsh that's not bordering on a stream right now, it's not under jurisdiction. So basically, what the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions has been encouraging us to do for several years now, and many towns have already adopted, as Bob expressed, is to expand and have a municipal bylaw, which basically folds in everything, you know, that's in the Mass Wetlands Protection Act and expands things a bit more. And I'll explain what the things are that we're, how we're expanding. Also, one thing to note is that currently, we also have to do enforcement sometimes. You know, we get a call from somebody about a neighbor who's putting down a bunch of trees right on the edge of the stream or something, or we drive by and happen to see something. And so we get called in. And, you know, this is really largely that people are unaware of the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. So that's why I'm taking this opportunity to spread the word a little further. We, our local Conservation Commission has developed a little trifold brochure, which I've shared around a lot. I think maybe when we completed it, it was shared with the select board members. I hope so. If not, we certainly would like you to all see it. And we're just trying to educate people so that we don't have to have enforcement. But occasionally, somebody is a little bit, you know, difficult and, you know, feels that, well, they see something that was grandfathered in, my neighbor did this, why do I have to follow, you know, this thing when they were able to do what I want to do now? So currently, and sometimes, and this is something to think really more as we look ahead towards more development pressure into the future, because we can't react to things in the future to our open spaces. We need to be thinking now, as our population grows and there is more pressure for development, what are the things we want to protect? I lost my train of thought for a second. Oh, so what I wanted to say was just that when it comes to enforcement, we have very little at our disposal. So while we do a lot of work and we try to work with people, if we do have a problem, really, if somebody wanted to challenge even our enforcement, it has to go to superior court, which, you know, most people know that that's going to be a lift for the town to engage in something like that. And a common thing that's being added to municipal bylaws is more like a ticketing situation like you would have with other permits that when they're not being complied with. So Bob mentioned DEP is our guidance, and I'm in contact with DEP a lot to oversee the applications that we get. When somebody, a homeowner, is formally going forward with a project, they submit an application to us, and we review it and give, you know, some guidance and feedback to them. We do a site visit with them. We talk about how they might accomplish their project or what conditions we have to be imposed. And then we have a public hearing, and we officially rule whether the project's going to be allowed and, you know, what are the special conditions and the, you know, the traditional standard conditions that they have to follow. And then we check in with them. And then when they're completed with their project, we will issue a certificate of compliance, which they come back to us again, and we go for another site visit to see that everything is stabilized and that if vegetation was required, we may have to look at that vegetation out for a couple of years to make sure that it grew, et cetera. So things like that. And folks may not know that when somebody has a project that we are overseeing with an order of conditions, they actually take the order to the registry of deeds, and it's put on their property. And then when the certificate of compliance is issued, they, they go back to the registry of deeds and it's removed. So it's a whole formal legal, you know, process and authority, and we are the local authority. And like I said, if we have issues, we contact DEP. If we have questions, we contact them. And if we really have problems with somebody, we contact DEP. But they are so short-staffed, especially in terms of coming out physically and with any enforcement, it's, you know, they just don't have the manpower to really do it. So what we're looking toward, and I was going to just mention when I was talking about the interests of the act, I mentioned them to you, and they're really just the resources and the values as they're currently stated. I wanted you to know that in developing our bylaw as it's proposed right now, we looked at a couple from other towns, like I said, many other towns have done it. And I, we mostly relied on what Great Barrington had. And they actually added recreation as a resource value. We did not do that. We stuck with the, pretty much, the resources, values that are currently stated. So I just want you to know, we're not going to the, you know, as far as some towns are going. But in terms of jurisdiction, we've added the water in the lake, isolated wetlands, thermal pools. So a couple of things like that, which are just intuitively obvious and, you know, have, we've been strongly encouraged to add. So that's pretty much all that we're doing. It's fairly simple. We've just added these few extra things. We added also something that has to do with a completely pristine property that's never been developed to add a little extra option, not a requirement, but we have a little more purview to maybe say a no-touch zone of, you know, 25 feet or something next to, you know, like absolutely can't do anything there. That's an option. So we just give ourselves a little more tools. We're not really looking to have to stop more projects or something just to have more knowledge and ability to review what people are doing and to protect these really valuable resources. And then, like I said, and I think each of you have been able, had a chance to see the draft bylaw, and so you can see that there's an enforcement piece at the end that gives us the option to impose, like I said, like the ticketing thing. And there's one more thing, and I don't know how much, I mean, you guys probably have, may have a better handle on, if there are more opportunities for actual developers to come in and develop any spaces in Dalton. But, excuse me, one thing that is not, that is kind of common knowledge is a developer can come in, they develop like, you know, a street, and there may be some conditions applied when they do the development. But by the time every last lot is sold on that street and whatever, the developer could be long gone, and certain water management issues, you have no ability to really go back to the developer. So there's actually a piece in there where, as many other towns, including Great Barrington, have done, where you have an opportunity to request some bond money to be put up to just make sure that the developer totally complies, you know, and that you have a chance to see what happens after a year or two, because sometimes water management issues are very difficult to predict, you know. But, you know, years, so, you know, we're obviously wouldn't be keeping something out forever, but for a couple of years, you get to see how, how it's changed when you cut down a forest, how that changes water flow and flooding for other properties. So I think that's the general overview that I wanted to give you. Does anybody have any questions for me? I'll try to answer.
Any questions on the board?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Okay.
Obviously, this is a capless endeavor, and it's going to supersede Massachusetts' general law, which the Conservation Commission has used as a guiding light for 20, 30 years, Bob?
Yeah.
And everything has always worked fine. What we're looking at here now is, one, giving yourself, because you're the acting agent, the authority to issue tickets, obviously with a financial penalty. I don't think that's really a great idea. Second, you want to expand your jurisdiction or issues that are not part of the Massachusetts general law now. And third, you're adding another layer of bureaucracy for a Dalton developer. To me, this could very well be an impediment to economic development in Dalton. And as Chair of the Economic Development Commission, I am certain, and in fact, we're having a media Wednesday, or maybe that will be on the agenda, I'm not sure. But I'm certain that the business community and residential community would have a real strong interest in altering and giving this additional authority and power to the Conservation Commission.
Can I, may I respond?
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, John, when you make this statement that everything's worked fine, it feels a little naive to me because, you know, as we have lost so many natural resources and we do pay the consequences for that, it's, you know, it's working okay. But the thing is, we're really getting a greater knowledge, and we have to, you know, go forward with the greater knowledge that we now have, and we have to adjust to that. So the last time, you know, this hasn't been updated for a while, and getting things to pass through our legislature is a really difficult process. And that's why so many towns are just moving full, you know, and very time consuming, and a lot of times, things don't happen really even as, even when they should for the public good. This is really something for the public good. And, you know, like I said, and this is not giving me personal authority. Oh, I forgot to state that this is unanimously endorsed by our Conservation Commission and Mass Conservation Commissions, and our DEP agent, and every environmental scientist that we work with to protect the lands all encourage us to be going forward with this. This isn't Cheryl Rose. So I just want to make sure you know that. And it doesn't give me any authority. I'm not our town agent. We don't have an agent.
You've dominated the conversation for 45 minutes. But just a couple other observations. This could very well impede economic development in adding another layer of bureaucracy and financial encumbrance to a developer. And that may be good, but it could be detrimental. And two, you mentioned that the town's population is expanding, and there might be future developments. Well, the town's population is not expanding. It's on a 10-year slide downhill, and it's projected to continue that way. We've lost, in the last census, we lost 500 people. I'm not sure this is needed. I'm going to keep it open mind. I want to collect more information, and I want to talk to the business community and the residential community. I think every other board should have an opportunity to weigh in on this. Boards like the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, and should evoke their opinions too.
Mr. Rose, you had some comments after, and Cheryl, I just want to say thank you.
Well, Cheryl wanted to say something more.
I wanted to say that we don't impose these regulations willy-nilly. We try to work with people. But if one recognizes and appreciates the values of these resources, then as a human being living on this planet, and in this environment, I think we, most of us recognize that we can't just blacktop the entire planet, and it's not fine for us, you know. So there has to be a balance. And it's not, the idea is not to impose regulations. A speed limit on a road is not just to, you know, make people have to drive slower for A speed limit on a road is not just to, you know, make people have to drive slower for no reason. We have things in place because we understand they have a value for us all to have, you know, a better world, for us to have a safer, healthier place to live. That's what this is about. It's not trying to obstruct people making money on doing something. Sometimes it might, but there are other costs when you do those kinds of things without, in denial of the value that they have to us living here. There are costs, even though a developer may not pay the cost, we as Daltonians may pay the cost or as humans living on the planet may pay the cost. So I just want to acknowledge that there are costs of all types that should be acknowledged and that protecting things that have value, even if you don't see a dollar sign on them, they have value to us.
And as this process goes forward, this will then come to town meeting for a vote for the new bylaw, right? So it's going to go through this, this process. But go ahead, Mr. Rose.
Uh, thank you. Um, I want you to know that we are completely reasonable and I can't recall any time we stopped somebody from doing a project. We advise people on how to do the project better. I can't recall in the time I'd been on or in the time I've heard Cheryl speaking about the ConCon that we said no to somebody. We are not obstruction, obstructionists. And to respond to Mr. Boyle's comment, we have no idea the kinds of pressure and expansion and development that's going to threaten our town in the coming decades. And having this kind of bylaw ahead of time before somebody wants to build something that's completely obnoxious and will ruin the character of our town, and that can happen. I mean...
But we don't get to vote on that. That's not up to us. I want to just step in here. It's not about the character of our town. Our job is to protect the resources that are in the act. So it doesn't matter if we like a project or we don't like a project.
That's right.
None of that, nope, we are just here, that is the end of our jurisdiction, so I just can't let you say that, sorry.
I, I, I'm disposed.
Somebody else will have to protect the character of your town.
Let's, let's say somebody wants to build something that's really going to threaten the riverfront or the wetlands. Having this ahead of time is so much better than trying to fight it once it happens. And we hope we never have to issue a fine, that, that 300 a day maximum fine, that's something that we have as a, as a threat to make somebody who might not be in compliance do what's right. And by the way, the health department has a fine structure. There, there's nothing wrong with having a fine structure for, for one of the town departments. And we wish to inform rather than, than enforce. And the 1996 River Protection Act, which was an upgrade of the 1992 Wetlands Protection Act, that was still the best that could be achieved at that time with recognition of what, what people thought was the value of the resources. And now this is 25 years later and we recognize these resources are even more important. So we can do better than what was buggered upon by the legislature in 1996. And again, to John Boyle's point, we're not overturning or usurping Massachusetts' general law, we're trying to make it better. And by having a bylaw, it makes it less likely that we would ever have to hire an attorney to go to Superior Court, which would be very expensive for our town. So I wanted to make those points. And finally, on the pamphlet, we would like your help in distributing that.
You know, I just thought of something I want to share.
Well, I'd like to...
John, because when you talk about how everything's working, when it comes, you know, flood mitigation is a very important value of wetlands.
Ms. Rose?
And I'm...
Oh, sorry, I'd like to, I'd like to just, I think we've had the presentation education, which was great and because tonight we're not making a decision on the, on the bylaw itself, we're just trying to move it forward to the next, next spot. So if there's additional information that would be beneficial for the community, I think that would be, that would be fine, but I would like to just kind of move this through.
Can I say one more thing?
May I just make one point, please?
Hold on, one more. Mr. Bishop?
As far as fines go, John, I've been on the commission 33 years.
Right.
I've only seen maybe one, two people get fined in my entire 33 years. There's many a times we come to find people through DEP or something, but we end up working with the people because a lot of people make honest mistakes and we, we're there to help them, we're not there to destroy them. So as far as the fine system there, it's there in case we need it. There was one large, one large total mess that should have been a huge fine and DEP kind of like didn't have the resources to follow through on it.
Mm-hmm. So... They dropped the ball.
They dropped the ball.
And people are suffering.
And now this person that has a business that keeps getting flooded up because this other people did what they wanted to.
Good, so some history.
That's all right.
Mrs. Rose, go ahead.
Right, I was going to say the flooding issue is huge and when you look at where the old high school is and that flooding, you know, nobody plans things like that, but it, the more we understand how nature works, the more we understand that we need to protect flood mitigation resources and there are other, of course, resources that, you know, other values of the resource. But I, the flood mitigation thing should be pretty clear with the way the old high school is that, you know, if we had a better understanding of that, so...
Thank you, Mr. Rose, and Mr. Rose, and thank you for the education on the, on this proposal. And our job tonight is to consider this, to move forward through its process, to then refer to, through our town manager, town council for any, any suggested edits or changes and then make its way through other committees and feedback and then bring it to town meeting on a warrant for resident review and vote. Is that correct, Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, could I have, I'll entertain a motion.
Two. Yeah, I'd like to move this through the committees and to our town manager for proposal to our town, town lawyer.
To our town council for review?
Yep.
And feedback? And then send it back to the commission. Okay. Is there a second?
Is there a D stand in the motion box?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay. Motion second, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Extentions? Ms. Boyle, will you note on that?
Yeah.
Okay, great, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Rose and Mr. Rose, and thank you again for that education on the proposal, it was very helpful. And then we go to the next step and I'd be happy to share those tri-fold brochures that you mentioned, so happy to share that as well.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you both.
We'd like to get them out to all the residents and we were asking the select board about putting them in with the town booklet, so...
With the, oh, for the annual report?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll make a note, we'll consider that as we kind of make that plan. I think that comes up in maybe early January, February, Tom, for the town report, so, let's get it here.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you both. We're on to number 12. This one, Mr. Bishop, sandwich boards for businesses. It's currently...
Yeah, I was approached by a couple of small business owners who was asked to take their signs down. And these people, I mean, we're supposed to be a business-friendly town. The new town video that was out there, that is really excellent done, has these sandwich boards in the video. And these guys are not asking to, what I mean, I guess it's asking the select board to do is write a letter requesting a trial to the zoning board, and I've already talked to Dan Esbel on it, and he's in favor of it, to just do like a trial period of like five or six months to let these people put these boards out there during their business hours and take them down. They're very responsible. I mean, these people are getting bashed, but you walk, drive around town and there's sandwich boards all over the place. So we either enforce it all the way or let these poor business people do it that really rely on these little signings. And I've talked to a couple of people that had written the bylaw before and they're, they're, they're very supportive of this also. So that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
And kind of like putting like a little, putting it out there like 8:00 AM and taking it down at dusk or, you know, no more than three or four feet high like a sandwich board, there's no lights or anything like that, but it's just a, just give them that little extra advertising when people are driving down Main Street that are traveling to town saying, whoa, okay, that's there. And they really, they have low budgets and they work on really thin margins, so, and to help these business people out, I think we should, we at least consider that.
Ms. Boyle, any thoughts?
Well, it's a complicated issue, but I think it was 2013, the town, because of sign issues, commissioned a sign commission, committee to write a new bylaw regarding signs. I was on it, Steve Sears was chairman, George White, Eddie Jarrow, I forget who else, the building inspector. And they came up with a, Steve did most of the work, a very thorough and thoughtful signed bylaw based on other cities and towns, kind of meshed a whole bunch of together to it. And one of the key issues was sandwich board signs. And the committee was adamantly against these because of issues in other towns where people were putting these up on other people's property to designate that their business was located down this street and so forth and so on. They weren't on their own property. So it just, issue we had came up in Dalton. So that was one of the things the committee voted to prohibit, among much other things like hourly gigs and so forth and so on, was sandwich board A-frame type signs. So it went to the town meeting and the thing passed unanimously. So what I have to say is I don't, without changing the bylaw, I don't see any way you can give anybody permission to do this. Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board, or anybody else, including the building inspector. And he has pretty much said that. If you want to change it, change the bylaw. And I think that's where we're at.
That's what I'm looking, John, I'm just looking for a trial period to try this to see if it will work.
Well, I don't think anybody can give you a trial period bylaw.
The zoning, can't they grant that just on...
No, they can't, I don't think they can. Because that's the town bylaw, how can you make an exception to it? I know what you're saying, I sympathize about it, but maybe we need to change the zoning bylaw, we're changing the conservation bylaw, we're changing the, the housing bylaw, why can't we change the sound bylaw, the sign bylaw?
We can't.
Okay, then that's, that's the avenue to go, I think. Because I went down, when Steve, other people told me about this problem, I went down my materials and the copy of the zoning bylaw proposal from 2013 and it says right in there, prohibited, sandwich board A-frame, and there's another thing they call them, I forgot what it was, are strictly prohibited. I just don't see any way around it at this point. So why don't we, I already told Steve, and we're talking about the stationary factory, where these people are looking for visibility for their businesses when they're inside of another building. And that's the problem we didn't deliberate at the sign meeting deliberations because it wasn't an issue, but now it is an issue. The stationary factory wasn't there. So it was, now it's a unique situation, I think that's the way to go. And I said that to Steve a month ago, we should reconvene, reconvene the signed bylaw committee and take the appropriate action.
That'll take months.
What if we, so is it the zoning board?
Yeah.
What if we sent a letter to recommend the trial period but also work towards changing the bylaw?
Oh, I definitely want to change the bylaw. I fully agree with John in that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, wouldn't...
So we see what the options are.
Bob, I don't think you would, I mean, but if you just deal with a specific issue, it would be an amendment to the bylaw.
Right.
I don't think that would be a big deal for a committee appointed by the town manager to come to an agreement on and suggest the type of change would be involved. Necessary language, whatever, to not change it, well, amended is a change.
Amended, that's always needed, is put amended.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go. I mean, the zoning board of appeals, Christ, a good thing of the year. You're not exactly the fastest-moving body in the town.
That's a, Ms. Hutchinson, what's your, what are your thoughts of how best we address this for our small businesses?
Yes, I think, you know, it, it has to be addressed through a, a look at the bylaw, a look at the issues that we've heard and maybe some that we haven't heard, just get everything out on the table and find, find some, some moderate solution for them. I like, you know, the idea of during business hours, unlighted, a size regulation, so it could say prohibited unless it meets these very stringent requirements that, that doesn't lead to, I think, the kind of results that that sign committee was fearing. And certainly getting the input from all of the people who were in that committee so that we know what all the issues were so we can, we can address them. And it would be fine if the, if the Board of Appeals wanted to draft a proposed bylaw and bring it to town meeting. If they, I, I think it would be important, if the select would want to ask them to do that quickly in case they didn't think they were the right board to do that. And then, you know, I certainly could convene a, a group to, to look at the issue and try to satisfy everybody's concerns.
I mean, be upfront here. What was happening down in Lennox Lee, people were placing these signs all over the place, sidewalks, other people's property. We definitely can't have that.
No, it's got to be with the owner's permission.
Yeah, and on the owner's property, not on the sidewalk.
No, absolutely.
Okay, just so we're clear here. And speaking of the Board of Appeals, Eddie Jarrow, who's on the Board of Appeals, was a member of the Sign Revision Committee. That may be a better, a bit even a better suggestion. Ask them to come up with a quick fix-me-up in time for the annual town meeting. First of all, not many people put these type of signs out during the snow season.
No, it's not like everybody's brother's going to do it.
No, but it's also seasonal.
Right.
Yeah. So if they can come up with some, a quick solution, good idea to discuss the Board of Appeals opinion. As I said, Eddie was on the committee.
Okay.
So write a letter to the chair of the zoning board to rec, to ask them to look into it. Do you want me to write the letter, is that something that can come directly from you, Tom?
I can do that.
You can take care, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Mr. Bishop, does that solve the question?
That's, that's good.
Okay, all right.
I just want it to work for these people because, you know, we want these guys to succeed.
Yeah, absolutely want to support these small businesses and, and any advertisement would be good.
We want to do it right too, we just don't want to do it.
Yeah, Bob, you're absolutely right about violations all over town.
Yeah.
Now, it's the interesting thing, I think there's an exemption for non-private organizations, hence the CRA and the Town Hall. We put 74 signs up.
Yeah.
But there are other ones, the nursing home, the gateway in the city consistently puts up...
They're up 24/7.
Yeah, and that's the one that you don't, anyway.
Awesome, thank you, Tom, for carrying that forward, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to number 13, a letter to Berkshire Superior Court requesting town clerk be excused from grand jury duty. We have a memo that's been drafted on behalf and it says, clerk of court, Berkshire, Berkshire County Superior Court, 76 East Street, Pittsville, Mass. 01201. To whom may concern, Ms. Heather Hunt has, was recently hired as Dalton's town clerk, an interim appointment by the select board due to the midterm resignation of the elected town clerk. Her start date has been set as January 1st, 2022, the day, the day of resignation of the current town clerk. We understand she is part of the grand jury pool, the grand jury to be selected January 3rd, 2022. I'd like to request that she be excused from this duty as the continuity of the office of town clerk is an essential function of the town. Her absence for possibly several months would result in undue hardship and extreme incommunities to the town. Thank you for your consideration. It'll be signed by the board. So there's no objection, we'd like to have a motion to accept the letter.
So who?
Second, is there a second?
Who are we sending this letter to?
Send it to clerk of court, Berkshire County Superior Court.
Yeah, but it's the judge that make, will make the decision. And I'm guessing that if she's in the jury pool, she'll have to make an appearance and then ask the judge to excuse her, recuse her.
Yes.
Along with the letter.
Yes.
So it's just not a total get out of jail card for you.
No, just a step, just a step.
Yep. Second.
Okay, motion second, any further discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions, here none, motion carries.
Okay, and we get signatures on someone's copy of that for... And we get signatures on someone's copy of that for?
Number 14, the appointment town manager as a voting delegate for M.I., M.I.I.A. annual meeting. Ms. Hutchinson.
I usually attend the annual meeting of our insurance agent, Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, and I am planning to attend the meeting of the Massachusetts Municipal Association late January, if one of these is taking place. The news over the last week regarding COVID has not been very optimistic, but assuming this goes forward, and even if not, I think there will be a Zoom alternative. I have in the past acted as the voting delegate for towns that I've worked for, just because I show up and, and that's, that's part of what I can do for you. Unless somebody else is planning to attend and would like to have that function, I'm happy to take that on.
Great. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
If we appoint town manager as voting delegate for M.I.I.A. annual meeting. Motion second, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions?
Jimmy, can we go back to item 13? I have a quick question.
Motion carries on number 14, thank you, Tom, for carrying that forward.
Question is, do we have a date when they're going to convene this grand jury?
I believe it's January 3rd.
January 3rd.
Monday, January 3rd.
Thanks. Your time.
Can I just say one thing about this M.I.A. annual meeting?
Good, Mr. Bishop.
The board usually, the board has it in the budget to have one of the members also attend. And I know John's been before, I've been a couple of times, and it's really rewarding. So we usually send like Dan, or Dan hasn't gone, and yourself hasn't gone, and I don't think Mark's gone, so.
Yeah, we'll throw out to the board, I'll, I'm happy to attend on behalf of the board, but whoever else wants to go.
Yeah, it comes in early January, so.
Yeah, I'll look at the dates, I've got your email and go and look at those dates, and I think it, it works for me on those dates, so.
I strongly recommend select board members, members of the finance committee, members of, and any municipal body really attend, attend this. It's the largest gathering of municipal officials in Massachusetts, and the opportunities for cross-fertilization, sharing information are just tremendous.
Right. I mean, if there's no objection by the board, I'm happy to represent the board, but a lot of members want to go, happy to go.
I'm out because I went last year, because nobody else wanted to go. It's always been a tradition that new members of the board have the opportunity to go, but nobody wanted to go, and so I went. So, I would disqualify myself this time around.
Yeah, and I have been before, so I'm willing to stop.
I'll check in with Mark and Dan, see if they're, if either of them are interested as well, so. Number 15, the town manager update.
In committee news, I hope everyone has had a chance to see the amazing promotional video put out by the Dalton Redevelopment Authority. It's available through the town website, dalton-ma.gov. Look for the headline, Town of Dalton Video. And the new Open Space and Recreation Committee has convened and elected Taylor Staubach as Chair. In department news, the Baker-Pleito Administration announced that the stationary factory had been awarded $630,000 from the MassWorks Infrastructure Program, which is available to private entities as well as municipalities. This grant will be used to make space for a new tenant, Lymphadivas, a medical equipment manufacturer. This state program is in its first year, and the stationary factory was awarded the fourth highest amount in the Commonwealth. Congratulations to the finance team for getting the tax rate recap done. The fiscal year '22 tax rate is down 77 cents to $20.74. The average tax bill will still go up, as the tax rate is simply the value of real estate divided by town meeting expenses. Valuations went up more than spending, so the tax rate is decreasing. Since town meeting spending went up, though, tax bills will also go up. On a question I got regarding plumbing sidewalks, while the town owns the snow blower that attaches to a plow unit, we rent the unit from December through March. The highway superintendent is planning a capital request for the unit for next year's budget. I'm pleased to report that the highway department received a grant of $1,632 from our insurance agent, Maya, four highway chainsaw kits, which include helmets, chaps, gloves, a vest, and a duffel for storage. We've begun making some changes to the website in order to make it more informative and easy to use. Please see dalton-ma.gov and let us know what you think. We do intend to keep tightening it up. I'd like to see more news items visible when the page comes up. Staff are becoming familiar with WordPress so that we can make most changes on our own. We'll still need Mungie for some time for structural issues. I have filed for a share of the Massachusetts statewide settlement in two opioid suits, a program available through the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office. I'm hoping to get some funds for the police department's DARE program and other related The town planner, highway superintendent, M.I., met regarding possibilities for applying for municipal vulnerability program grants and came up with two. First, an inventory and assessment of town culverts for flooding vulnerability. Once we have the culvert assessment, we can apply for mitigation grants, that's construction. Second, we would consider applying for funds for the construction of a new drainage line along Orchard Street once that is engineered. In project news, first, we continue to be aware of the requests that the volume of the locator tones on the pedestrian lights be reduced. We're just waiting for the project to receive its final completion status before we change the state of anything as installed. On ARPA projects, first, the water district has hired Time Bond to do the engineering the board voted to go forward with. And they have, in turn, hired a subcontractor who's been working in the Green Ridge area for the past couple of weeks. On the highway side, as I mentioned before, we're getting engineering done for Orchard Street, which is somewhat problematic, as major drainage work should be done at the same time, rerouting part of a culvert down the street to avoid backups near Pease Avenue. Other engineering under ARPA includes plans for milling and paving Washington Mountain Road from Dalton Division to just above Ivan Drive, John Street, Sunset Drive, Edward Drive, Judith Drive, and Chamberlain Avenue. Now, this is just for the first year's engineering, we still have another year to go, so plenty more opportunities for that engineering work to be funded through ARPA. On Walker Brook, the engineers and town representatives had a kickoff meeting and established a work schedule. Site work has started and the project is on track. The classification and compensation study is almost done, with a report issued and just revised job descriptions to come. I will get the select board copies of the report very soon, I've actually put those in your mailboxes now, to prepare for a presentation by our consultant, Carol Granfield, on January 10th. I expect to have a few amendments to propose based on recent information. In town hall renovation news, we are working with John Berry to redesign the first phase to focus on asbestos abatement and fold all of the actual renovation into a new second phase. We're still looking for people certified to evict bats in western Massachusetts. If anyone knows someone, please get in contact. And finally, on the Borden land, which is the APR land in North Mountain, I'm very pleased the Department of Agricultural Resources has accepted the town's plan for maintaining the property and its APR status, leasing the tillable land and maintaining the wooded land as recreational land.
That's excellent. It's good work right there. It's all good, it's all good work, that's a very important topic we've been talking about for quite some time. That's great, thank you, Tom. Excellent. Any questions for Tom? Ms. Boylan?
Go.
That's a great update again, Tom, thank you. And by the way, I, I, quick feedback on the website, dramatic improvement, more improvements to come, but it was so much easier on the eyes and easier to navigate and understand, so.
Thank you.
Good step in the right direction, for sure.
I, I thank Alyssa, who has made most of the major substantive changes.
Awesome, thank you, Alyssa, that's great work. Any future agenda items? Can we kind of, do we have a run list of the future agenda items? I usually keep one, but I kind of.
We should get one, we should get one.
What's that?
We should get one. Alyssa, could you give us anything that you have on further?
Yeah, I usually kind of keep a run list, but it's slacked off recently.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this fits under the criteria of future items, but we have a regularly scheduled meeting for the 27th of December. It's traditional that there only be one meeting in December, and this would probably be it. So what I'm trying to suggest to the board and town manager, if there's no compelling reason to have a meeting on the 27th, we skip it until the 1st.
Agreed.
And second of all, that doing this for us, the board, I'm doing it, suggesting this for the benefit of the staff, because Christmas week prior to that, they have to do all the preparation.
Yep.
Make up the agenda, post the meetings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm suggesting that, of course, it would be, consider the town manager that there's no compelling issues on board, that we skip this meeting.
I would, I would agree.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion second, I'll, any, any further discussion? No, here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries. So we'll just defer to if anything comes up.
Thank you, I'll try my best to move things into January.
Oh, sorry, my phone didn't work, I didn't see it.
And thank you, Mr. Boylan, for bringing that up.
Well, I, it's the staff, I mean, they would have had to be doing all this preparation for a select board meeting on Monday, while they're trying to prepare their families and hosts, and maybe even travel during the days preceding that weekend.
Absolutely.
Which is Christmas weekend.
Absolutely.
It's for them, not for us.
Yep, absolutely. Any items anticipated 48 hours before the meeting? Here none? Any remarks of the select board?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Dalton Fire Department, Police Department, all the businesses, and all the volunteers that made that Santa party go. That was really well received. They did an awesome job, they're out there all over the place, so.
Another great event.
Hats off to them.
And especially with the, the schedule change because of the weather from Saturday, so moving into Sunday, and it was a great turnout, too, so it's great. And as we're, as we're now in the holiday season, I just want to wish all of our, all of our team around the table here and all of our, our, our team members of the Dalton staff, Brittany, there in the room for all the great work you've done all year long, and Alyssa, welcome to the team again, and all the great work you're doing, but wishing everyone in Dalton a very happy holiday season, safe and happy, and, and we'll see you all next year. But that's really about all. Did anybody else have a tour of the building, the new high school? Did you get into the tour?
It's supposed to be Friday, right?
No, just at that time we went.
Okay, all right, yep, yep. But if you haven't had a chance to see the new high school, definitely get an opportunity one more.
It's supposed to be Friday, correct?
Yeah, yep, yep. So for announcements, any other remarks to the select board? Here none? For announcements, Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which is in effect from November 15th, 2021 through April 15th, 2022. There is no parking on streets between these dates. Is there no parking on streets or overnight parking?
Overnight.
Overnight.
Overnight parking.
I think it was 11 to 6 or so.
The following committees have vaccines, oh, vacancies, vaccines.
Vacancies.
Vacancies and are looking for volunteers, the ADA Committee, the Beautification Commission, the Cultural Committee, Dalton Cable Advisory Committee, the Dalton Development and Industrial Commission, the Dalton Green Committee, Memorial Day Committee, the Stormwater Management Commission, and the Waste Management and Recycle Committee. And I'll just add that these committees can't function without great volunteers, so if you have time and wish to volunteer, who should they call, Tom? Give Alyssa a call at the main office and she'll connect you with the, with the right folks. Our next meeting is scheduled to take place on, well, we just decided to push that, so we will not have a meeting on the 27th. And with that, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor?
I think it's.